Hey, this is Pastor Curry, pastor of the Yeezai and Fair Baptist Church. Wilmington's most exciting church, the church that love ya, ain't anything you could do about it. Today with Coffee with Curry, I'm super excited about today's show. Listen, you better call somebody real quickly and let them know that the Wayna Dobson is on the Coffee with Curry Show, and we are going to talk about her bid for city council. It's going to be great. This woman of God, as I often tell everyone I meet, this woman of God have certainly been a friend to many, have served everyone, and have served all over the place. So I'm looking forward to this conversation that we're going to have today. Why don't you call somebody real quickly, tell them Coffee with Curry is on, and let's get after it.
Good morning Delaware and surrounding areas. You are now tuned in to this week's Coffee with Curry. Join us every Sunday at 11:00 a.m. with new guests every week. So grab your cup of coffee and join us on Coffee with Curry.
And we're back. Well, as I promised all of you, I have the Wayna Dobson. When you say her name, you have to put T-H-E-E because Wayna, it is a joy and a privilege. I'm always jealous because you're on the Congo Hour, and you've never given me any, any real time on our show. But today, I am grateful to God that you are with us today. How are you doing?
I am wonderful. Thank you for asking Pastor, and it's an honor to be here with you today.
Yes, and don't be so nervous, you know.
I'm not nervous.
You sure? Because you're the pro on TV.
I'm positive.
But, and I know I'm not trippy, you know, I'm not as good looking as he is. So, so I don't know whether you, you, you were just, you know, a little nervous today. But listen, Wayna, I am just grateful, and I'm just overwhelmed, and that's probably why I'm picking so much. But first, before we get started with anything, how is the family doing?
Oh, the family is doing well. I am so proud of all of my children. Do you mind if I talk brag about them for a minute?
Please.
All right, so I'll start with Amber. Amber is a VP at a major bank here in Wilmington. I don't know if I'm allowed to say, you know, the rest. But I don't know what she want me to say.
Okay, understood, understood.
And she's like my mother, so I gotta be very careful. So she's doing extremely well. She was just voted as the president of the Newcastle County Delaware State University alumni.
Wow, excellent.
So yeah, Hunter is doing extremely well. He's a DJ, travels all over. He just had a baby. She's a little over, well, she's gone, she'll be three months this month.
So he stopped long enough to, to have a baby?
Yes, and it really took me some time Pastor, because I'm like, my baby is having a baby. Like I couldn't, I, I just couldn't.
So maybe you gonna have another baby too, not, not, not you.
Right, 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 yeah. But then there is my first granddaughter, Anaya, who I'm extremely proud of. She was kind of jealous of Hunter's baby because we wanted a boy, but he had a girl. She wanted to be the only girl.
Right.
So, Anaya is going into her sophomore year at Delaware State University.
Wow.
And she's an entrepreneur. She braided my hair, so she does, she braids, and she's been in her business, I want to say now, for maybe about three years.
Okay.
She has a website and everything. She's very professional, so yeah.
So she's taken after grandma, and mom too, I'm sure, but, but I'm definitely going to say grandma.
Oh, thank you.
What do they call you? Because you too young to be grandma.
Me me.
Okay, yeah, because I was going to say you too young to be called grandma. Now, Wayna, you were born here in Wilmington, or in Delaware, in Wilmington surrounding. Tell us a little bit about who raised you and, and, and a little bit about your upbringing.
Okay, sure. So I was born and raised in Dunleef.
Okay.
Which the address is Wilmington, however, it's considered the county. So I'm always arguing with my friends when they say you're from Newcastle. I'm like, no, I'm from Wilmington, so I'm proud to say I'm from Wilmington. But I was raised by my grandparents. My mother was very instrumental in my life, but my grandparents raised me. And my grandfather was actually one of the first homeowners in Dunleef. And it is recorded, in the Recorder of Deeds. I learned servicehood from both of my grandparents.
Okay.
My grandfather was very instrumental in assisting those that came from like Puerto Rico or other countries, helping them get a jobs, very instrumental over at LACC. My grandmother was a homemaker, home, is that what they, domestic, yeah, homemaker. However, she was like a classroom grandmother. I went to St. Peter's Cathedral, and she was there all the time, so I could not do any wrong. And she also would serve down in the senior center at St. Peter's. So after school, I would have to go down and assist with the seniors. We did ceramics and other things. As far as my grandfather, he taught me what real community service is and my right to do my civic duty. He marched with Martin Luther King.
Okay.
And I have pictures of him with Harry Belafonte, Coretta Scott King, and other well-known people. So I'm very proud to say that. And he got me excited to vote Pastor.
Okay.
I can remember us walking down the street to the Deal of War Community Center, holding hands. For me, I said I voted because he would allow me to pull the lever. Back then, it wasn't a button, it was a lever that we had to push. So yeah, that's, I had a great upbringing.
Excellent, excellent. And I, I definitely can identify with you, you the one pulling the lever, because that's what I do with Ashley now. I want to keep her in the practice of making sure she do her civic duty. Wayna, you earlier talked a little bit about your servitude and how, servitude and how you have, was brought up to really be a person to give back. Wayna, I've been in Delaware for, I've been in Wilmington for 19 years, and my whole pastoralship, I've known of you.
Okay.
It seems like there is no limit to the level of service that you give to people. Now, I can, you know, I'm not paid, so I can just say what I need, what I want to say.
Right.
I, I can remember many times the Congo Funeral Home. I mean, that's where I first met or heard of you.
Okay.
How you served families, how you handled families, how you, it was almost like a crises became calm because you knew how to calm the ravens seas. And I had family members who would say to me that, you know, as long as Wayna is helping, it's going to be all right. And it was funny because I had a very, very close relationship with Mr. Congo, and I often talked, I thought you were his daughter.
Wow.
He said, she is my daughter, but not the one I hate.
Yes, yes.
So, so I, I, I can imagine when you talk about your grandfather really, and your grandparents teaching you how to give back, that's a part of who you are, you know, and, and then moving even from that, you moved into working for the Newcastle County Exec.
Yes.
And you worked for Lisa Blut Rochester. But there's one more thing I want to just add before I even allow you to continue is that you, you did something during, one of my frat brothers had transitioned suddenly. Happens to be Lisa Blut Rochester's husband.
Yes.
I was there to do the omega section of the service. But how you handled the dignitaries, the little people, everybody during that service was remarkable. And I, I often talked about it, and, and I said, you know, that could be the reason why you ended up working with Lisa because you really showed, you know, Congo Funeral Home did what they needed to do, but you really showed your service. It wasn't about you, it was about those who, who you were serving. And I just want to say on the front end of this time of us being together, thank you, because I've been watching, and I've seen you just serve selflessly, and I think that's really important.
Thank you Pastor. Once again, just going back to my grandparents, I've learned in life that to treat everybody the same. So it doesn't matter who they are. So working at the funeral home, it didn't matter if they had lots of money or no money at all. I treated them as if I would want to be treated. And with, with the Congresswoman, yeah, you mentioned her, Charles, he transitioned very suddenly. And when they asked me to kind of oversee the dignitaries and the order of service, I was honored. I was, I was extremely honored that they chose me, although we're friends, they didn't have to choose me. But I think based on what you said, them knowing how I served the community and families was very important to them.
Well, that gentle touch, you know, you do serve the community well, you do serve families well, but you have that touch of calming. And that's what I always enjoyed about you, Wayna. You know, I've never really, I mean, I, I've been able to, to continue to have a, a relationship with you, but you, you have that, that it's going to be all right.
Yes.
You know, at the end of the day, the storm, the storm is swirling all around us, and everything is going crazy. It's going to be all right. And I think that's why a lot of people really cling to you.
Yeah, and that could be just personal things that I went through in life. Like no matter what it is, or what, what I've gone through, or what I'm going through currently, I know that this too shall pass. So I just believe that although the storms come.
Right.
They're going to pass, so, and the sun will shine in the morning.
Amen. That's that scripture, we may endure for the night, but joy comes in the morning. So you really kind of like live that up.
Yes.
And, and I don't want you to think I'm crying, it's just that my, my allergies are killing me.
Oh, I was like, oh wow.
Although.
I'm moving Pastor.
And you are, because you've done it all your, all of my time of being here in Wilmington. Wayna, there is a love you have for Wilmington, and I've watched that as well. You're now at a place where you are ready to serve. Before I get into that totally, you also served other elected officials.
Yes.
One of our good friends, County Exec, and you served him well. Tell me a little bit about some of the things that you did in keeping him organized, as I would call it.
Tom Gordon, still my friend, I still call him County Exec, although he's no longer the County Exec. I had the awesome opportunity of being an executive assistant in the executive office. And I had the opportunity of working with constituents that would call in for different things. And I would always do my best, if I didn't have the answer, to point them in the direction of someone that did. I also had the opportunity to go out with him in the community and solve problems. I also, he, he trusted me so much Pastor, that I would oversee some of the managers' meetings. So I was like, okay, this little young black girl overseeing like a multitude of different people. Also, we came up with, and I don't know if you remember this, he allowed me to host, it was called Your County at Work.
Okay, yeah.
And it was extremely important to, for taxpayers to know where their dollars was going. So I would go out to different departments and interview the team and have them share with the constituents exactly what they do. And I learned so much from there, so yes.
Well, well, you said you couldn't believe that a little young black girl was doing A, B, C, and D. Well, the reality of it is your work continued to speak for you. You jump in, you don't sit in the background. It doesn't matter where you are, and that's why I, I think this is going to be a great opportunity for Wilmington, if we really do what we need to do in order to make sure you get elected into the position that you're running for. And we're going to talk about that. Now, you also worked with Lisa Blut Rochester as well.
Yes.
So let's hear a little bit about that experience.
Okay, so I started out as a scheduler.
Okay.
And her schedule was hectic, like everybody wanted her because she's the, you know, the first black female woman Congresswoman. So her schedule was extremely tight. We would get a lot of calls from constituents that just needed resources. So there was a need, and we filled that need, and the Congresswoman gave me the opportunity to be the constituent services representative.
Okay.
And so I was in charge of any constituent calls that came in to make sure that they were served properly. And once again, if it wasn't something that we did on the federal level, then I would refer them to different organizations. I also would go out to nonprofits to see what their needs were, anything that the Congresswoman could help her with. I also served as her liaison. Oftentimes, when she was in DC, I would go to meetings on her behalf.
Wow, so you did a whole lot.
I did.
I mean, you have been prepared for such a time as this.
Yes.
We're going to take a quick commercial break, and when we come back, I want to talk a little bit about now Wayna, City Councilwoman.
All right.
We'll be right back.
We need volunteers, we need mentors, and we need sponsorship. So please, think about donating to Duffy Soap. Go on our website, duffysopene.com, and donate that way. You can call us at 302-652-3532. We can take your payment over the phone. You can mail us a check at 100 West 10th Street, Suite Number 9, Wilmington, Delaware, 19801. Also, you can donate your time. If you don't have money, donate your time, you know, come help us with the garden, you know, help us mentor, or help be a tutor, things like that. So please, think about donating to Duffy Soap.
Local news and politics in the city of Wilmington, Delaware. The latest headlines with your host, Dr. C.T. Curry.
But they getting rich, getting new cars, getting new houses, getting new opportunities, but the community is still getting nothing.
And co-host Kobe Owens.
And from that time, we have slowly seen our democracy become under attack.
Weekly episodes, Sundays at 5:00 p.m. The Source.
Greetings, I am Wayna Dobson, your candidate for Wilmington City Council at Large. I have served our community and constituents for over 35-plus years. And in doing so, I decided that I would run. I want to be an advocate, continue to be an advocate for constituents and those in the community. I want to be a listening ear and get a resolve done for you. You are important to me, and that's why I am running. So I am asking that on September the 10th, that you vote for me, Wayna Dobson, Wilmington City Council at Large.
How you guys doing today? My name is Brandon Snow. I am president of South Bridge Civic Association. I have been a long-term resident of South Bridge. For those who don't know, my grandfather was Willie Snow. We had Snow's store on Beenhilled, which was a longstanding staple in the community. I, I'm here as the new civic president to pledge my transparency and see the growth and prosperity of our community going forward. For those who need to reach me, feel free to reach out to me via email. It is southbridgecivicassociation.de@gmail.com. And if you need to reach me by phone, feel free to reach out as well. I can reach you at 302-363-4788. Thank you.
And we're back. Well, great conversation thus far. We got an opportunity to get to know the Wayna some more. We, we heard about the two grandchildren, we heard about the two children. Everybody's doing well, and she's doing good. You know, Wayna, you, you are preserved well. What is the, what is the, the water you drink? That, I'm not going to get into your age, but you got grandchildren, you got a grandchild in college.
Right.
So, so, so what are you drinking? Well, I hope this.
Water Pastor, water.
All right, thank you, thank you for correcting me, but, but I'm very grateful to see that you have been preserved very well. Before we talk a little bit about your, your bid for candidacy with the city council, there was something that just came across my mind during the break, and that is, you were sick during the 2019 era time, right before COVID really came in strong. And the way you were able to even handle that rebound was remarkable. Could you share with the people a little bit about what happened?
Of course. So in, actually, it was beginning of, the end of 2018, I started just not feeling well. I couldn't, I couldn't walk from here to, to you without getting out of breath.
Right.
And the doctors tried, they couldn't figure out what it was. But it was my rheumatoid doctor, Dr. Mansour, who, when I went to her, I had, no, let me back up, because I'm getting ahead of myself. When I couldn't breathe, this one particular time, I couldn't even make it to the parking garage to get my car. So I went to urgent care, and urgent care did a chest X-ray, and they was like, you have to get to the ER immediately. So when I got to the emergency room, they did another, other testing, and my lungs were white. There was like almost no gray area. So I had double lung pneumonia. And I was on oxygen 24 hours, seven days a week, from January of 2019 to June of 2019. And during that time, I became extremely weak, like I would just fall. And when I was ready to go back to work in July, the rheumatoid doctor diagnosed me with a rare muscle disorder, and it's called, dang, what is it? Myocitis, I couldn't get it out. Myocitis, and there's different types of myocitis, but I had dermyocitis. And I, it was, it was a very difficult time for me because, one, I was extremely active. So it was like I had to sit down for a minute. So, but I pushed through because I had just examples of other people, particularly Dr. Apostle Mike Freeman, who at one time had lung issues, and they put him on an echo machine. It was him and 10 other people. And 10 of those people died, and he was the only one that survived. So I believe that God had no respect a person, that what he did for him, that he would do for me, and here I am today.
Amen.
Yes.
And, and, and don't look anything like what you've been through.
Thank you. I know, I look at pictures, I'm like, wow.
I remember the, the whole season, and the prayers of the saints were really going up.
Yes.
That the Lord would, would really give the miracle, because that's what you needed at that, at that point. You needed a miracle.
And I don't want to cut you off, but your prayers helped as well, because I was on five o'clock prayer time. Like I really needed, I really needed to hear from God. And every single message that you gave was so inspiring to me, yes.
Well, I'm glad that I could do a little part, but I'm just, I'm, I'm, this is Wayna Day, and I want to make sure, while I got you on this show, we give as much, much leverage to you today, but thank you so much.
Thank you, yes.
Wayna, I don't want to run out of time, because when we start talking, time just flies. Wayna is running for city council. She wants to be a public servant. She wants to be out in the public and, and where people beat up on you.
Right.
Now you're going to cause the pastor to become a street person. You, first, why do you want to be a person that's going to get beat up on?
Well, first of all, I believe that I've already been doing the service to the community. Like currently, I have a neighbor, I don't want to call her name, because, but she would call me for anything. Somebody could put their trash out too soon. I needed to let them know the time that the trash is supposed to go out. Tractor trailers would be just left in the community. I would reach out to the proper departments to take care of that. And just growing up, just the servicehood that I did, I believe that when you are choosing someone to serve you, that they should already be doing the work.
Yes.
Not just going to go get a title, but already doing the work. So I believe that I'm already being a city council person at large.
Yeah, and for those of you who are watching, that's really critical. While I certainly said, you know, why would you want to do this now? It is so difficult to find good quality people who are doing the work, who have already been there and want to continue to do the work, but do it in an official capacity, to really sign up for the job. Because it's so much negativity to try to go at people to keep them from running. But you ought to be commended, that after all the work that you have done, even for the one, let's just talk about that one constituent, we don't have to know her name, but they, that person has confidence that if I tell Wayna, Wayna going to get it done.
Yes.
As, as, as pastor here at Yeezai and Fair, I'm saying, I don't care what I've ever came, come to you for.
Yes.
You just make it done. I mean, once I was trying to get into, to, to Tom Gordon's office, you said, all right Pastor, we're going to make it happen, and it happened.
Right.
So, so I'm grateful, one, that you got enough strength to be able to serve Wilmington. I, you, those who watch my, The Source Show, I'm very critical of some members of city council. We're not, we're not negative on this show at all.
Okay.
But, but, but to have people now rising up saying, you know what, I'm ready to serve officially, because you've been serving. I talked, we talked about the Congo Funeral Home, I mean, that, that's a service.
Right.
We, we talk about how, how you make people feel and how you respond to people. All of that is service, so now you want to step up, and you're going to serve in a capacity of, at large, as opposed to a district.
Correct.
Now tell me, what's the difference between the two?
So a district, this person, the city council person, just focuses on that particular district. Now, I was encouraged to run for just a district, but I was the president of the Third District Neighborhood Planning Council, and very involved in my civic association, which is something that all council people should have been involved in, if not now, because civic associations and neighborhood planning councils are extremely important. So there, I learned so much. And why I'm running for at large is because being a leader, I had the opportunity to meet and sit down with other leaders in different districts, and just know that I didn't want to just focus on just one part of Wilmington that I believe that everyone deserves me to serve them.
That's right.
Yes.
Well, awesome response, and that is true. Just because you were called, you know, there's a commercial that says the Midas Touch.
Yes.
I'm going to call it the Wayna Touch.
Oh, thank you Pastor.
Because there is a, there is a touch that you have, that you bring, where people know that they're heard. All too often in, in the political world, people are not heard. They just want your vote, and you just keep moving. So for those of you who are watching me, you know, I have totally, without any reservation, endorsed Wayna Dobson for city council. But I need you all to make sure that you do something, and that is, make sure you tell them somebody else. We need her in city council. Now, Wayna, just in case there's somebody who's watching, how, if we want to donate, how can we donate?
So two ways. You can call me directly.
Okay.
On my cell phone, and that's another thing Pastor. I've always shared my cell phone number with people, and it doesn't matter what time of the day, I will always answer. So my phone number is 302-521-7325.
Excellent.
And my website is Wayna, spelled W-A-Y-N-N-A. I gotta say it.
Well, you gotta say it, because I spelled it one N.
Right, I know. That's why I said it. The number four.
Okay.
Wilmington spelled out dot com.
Okay.
And there's a link there. And there's a link there for people to give or also volunteer.
Okay.
Yes.
Now, make sure our, the team, we have that on the screen so people can see it, because a lot of our seniors are wondering how they can do it. And you've given your phone number, so for those who don't want to go online, they can call you and come pick up. Because you'll come pick up a check, won't you?
I sure will.
Okay. Because that's important in the time that we are living in right now. Wayna, there's some points I'm sure you may have of why, not why, but you run for city council. You may want to share, could you share any of that with us today?
Most certainly, Pastor. I've watched city council on Zoom, and I've also attended meetings. And oftentimes, I hear or witness council people not vote for what the constituents want, but for, sometimes they're for personal reasons.
Okay.
I don't want to make anything personal. It's always about the constituents. And that's why I said at large, because I want to hear everybody's concerns and make a difference in their lives.
Yeah. Now, for those of you who, earlier I asked a question. I said, you know, what's the difference between the district and the at large? And Wayna certainly shared what it was. It's one key point, I want to make sure for those of you who are tracking and following us now, is that you can vote, let's say if you live in the third district, you can still vote for Wayna. She's not going to interrupt your district vote. We have to make sure that we are voting, because she's at large. And the at large piece is to make sure that, I think it's three people at large would be able to. We want to make sure on the first ballot, the top of the ballot, Wayna Dobson's name is going to be the top of the ballot. We want to make sure we put enough votes out there where she can be at the top. But that's what, that's very important for those of you who are watching. You're not saying, I have, I can't vote for my person and Wayna. Yes, you can. You can vote for your district council medic person, as well as you can vote for Wayna, and that's going to be very, very critical. I think it was, Justin had ran one time, and a lot of people had a lot of confusion about that.
Yeah, I do remember that.
They was like, you know, how can I vote for him and this person? When you're running at large, you can do that. So I want to make sure everybody knew that. We're going to take a quick commercial break. And when we come back, this, the next time, we're going to go back a little bit further into her running for city council, some of the work that she's done, and give an opportunity for Wayna to give a closing statement to all of you. Again, I am 100% behind. She didn't even have to ask me whether or not I'm going to support her. I'm supporting her even if she don't want me to, because that's how I'll do it. We'll be right back.
Hello, my name is Kobe Owens, and I'm running for the Democratic nomination for the city council first district, right here in Wilmington. I am running on a platform of addressing our affordable housing crisis, making sure we're helping both homeowners and renters, both live in this city, live in safe and affordable housing. I'm running on a platform to address affordable housing, but also looking at quality of life issues, making sure that our street signs are up, our streets are fit, our sidewalks aren't cracked, and making sure our communities are safer for everyone. And lastly, I am running on a sustainable, sustainable development and economic growth platform, one that makes sure we're investing into our neighborhoods. And our best investment that we can make is investing into our youth, making sure that we are preparing them for our future. And then lastly, expanding senior programming to make sure that they continue to age in place right here in the first district, in the city of Wilmington. I'm doing this for y'all. Vote for Kobe Owens.
Hello, Wilmington. I am Michelle Harley, and I represent the Fourth Councilmatic District. The communities in the fourth district are South Bridge, the Riverfront, Midtown Brandywine, Trinity Vicinity, and a portion of the East Side. I am running for my reelection on Tuesday, September the 10th, for the fourth district city council seat. And I would love for you to donate and to consider volunteering. To learn more about what I am doing and what I plan to do, you can visit my website at www.michelleharley.com. Together, we can move the fourth district forward. Thank you.
Dear doctor, your screens saved my mom. You can keep my screens now.
Hello, my name is Eugene Young. I am incredibly thankful to be here. I am a candidate for U.S. Congress. And I believe when it comes to Congress, it comes to service. One of my favorite lines about service is, you can't lead without loving. You can't save without service. So what's the depth of your love? Or what's the quality of your service? So I ask for the love and service is what brings me here before you today, and wanting to take that and extend that into Congress as we move forward. I look at my last 20 years of serving the community, and I look forward to having another 20 and being able to find more ways to even better serve the community, which has given me so much. So please feel free to join us at EugeneYoung.com. That's E-U-G-E-N-Y-O-U-N-G.com. That's EugeneYoung.com. If you're interested in volunteering or donating, it can be $5 a month, it can be $100 a month, it could just be a standard donation of $10. We appreciate it all. Thank you so very much, and wish you a wonderful, beautiful day.
Christopher Holton. I'm very active. It was a Saturday morning. Normally, I go for my normal walk.
With no warning, Chris suffered a near fatal heart attack. But thankfully, Brian Buckley, a bystander, saw him collapse and rushed to help.
He did this big gasp for air and then just stopped. It's like I went into autopilot. It's like all that training I did back in the day around CPR just magically came out of nowhere.
Because of the CPR training that Brian received, Chris did make it and didn't die on the trail that day. CPR training provided by the American Heart Association.
Looking at your hands, these two hands could save a life.
Being a father, you want to be around. You want to be around for your kids.
Heart disease is America's number one killer. To learn more about how the American Heart Association helps save lives, go to HelpHeart.org.
Hello, I'm Marcus Henry, and I'm running for Newcastle County Executive. I spent over 20 years working in state and local government, trying to bring the good programs and services you deserve here in Newcastle County. Please support my campaign. Please look us up at MarcusHenryBE.com for further information. I look forward to meeting you all over next year, and I look forward to your support. Thank you.
And we're back. Great conversation thus far with Wayna. I'm just overwhelmed and happy today because, again, another daughter of the city of Wilmington is deciding that she wants to step up. She wants to step up and serve the community. Not like this would be a new type of service, because she's served her whole life. She talked a little bit about her grandparents, who really put inside of her that need to give back to humanity, not looking down on anyone, but always reaching down to pull someone up or reaching parallel to make sure that the person is taken care of. Those things are very important. And, and you know, Wayna, we've had a good time talking about grandchildren. I had a good time talking about, you know, you've been preserved. So, so, and we don't have to worry about you being like some politicians, they can't move around, they can't get nothing done. You still got that youthism in you where you're able to make some stuff happen. Wayna, if there's one goal that you would really like to accomplish, accomplish as a city council person, do you, could you share what that would be?
Yes, Pastor. One of the main things that I really want to focus on is constituent services.
Okay.
I hear so many constituents who feel as though that they're not being heard or they're not getting the answers that they want. That's extremely important to me. I think everybody needs to be heard, and everybody needs to know that they are important.
Yeah. Now, you know, Wayna, it's interesting, because a lot of times, that, the people will say all these big things they want to do, and they really can't do it.
Right.
But the one thing that you really want to focus in on is something you've been doing, and in city council, you can do it. And that is one of the major complaints. One of the major complaints is, I'm not heard.
Yes.
I've heard on our show, people have made comments that, you know, I want to voice my opinion, I'm not being heard, I'm frustrated, I'm angry at this, that, or the other. You didn't say you're going to solve people from being frustrated and angry. What you are going to say, what you are saying is, you're going to be heard.
Yes.
And you will make sure you're that catalyst to make sure that happens.
Most definitely. Another thing, Pastor, that you don't often hear talk about is mental health.
Oh, okay.
So that's one of the things that I believe is one of the, when we talk about safety in our communities, I believe that our mental health has a lot to do with safety in our communities. So I want to be an advocate for mental health. Any concerns that people have about mental health, or making people aware of mental health, and that it's okay. And I know this might sound crazy talking about it, but it's okay to seek help.
Oh, yes. In our community, that is a little crazy, but the reality of it is, that is true.
Yes.
It is okay. One of the things that I've noticed that have not gotten out as strong as they needed to get out, and that is that the Wilmington Police Department now has people driving with them to help in mental crises instead of shooting people. And I think a person like you who would be open to say, hey, let's talk about what we are serving and what else we need to do. That is awesome. I think, I think that's great. So you want to deal with the mental health? It's, our community is suffering really bad in that area. And I think we do need to be able to feel comfortable with getting help.
Right.
So I'm with you 100% on that. Now, you had an opportunity to serve. I always thought you were Congo, but your last name is not Congo. And, and they're friends.
You and a lot of other people did too.
Yeah, yeah. But they say if you're around a person long enough, you start looking like them. So y'all start looking like too, so. But, but have you gotten any endorsements yet? Or have the Congos endorsed you?
Yes, they have. Of course, Trippi and I, and we talked about this last week on our show. He has endorsed me as president of city council. Mr. and Mrs. Congo, I have their support. Other supports I have is my best friend forever, Marla Blunt Carter. I have Ashley Christopher from the city of Wilmington. I have, oh, wow. State Representative Stephanie Bolden said that she has endorsed me. Former Senator Margaret Rose Henry has endorsed me.
Excellent.
Yeah, so I have quite a few.
You got, you got, you have some very strong people. I've very, you have not seen a person I don't respect thus far.
And you know what? Donald Morton did an endorsement for me.
Oh, Donald.
So someone that like personally knows me endorsed me, and I was very grateful for his endorsement.
Matter of fact, I, I, it was like two months ago. He said, when you come back in town, we're going to have lunch. We had this rivalry going on, where he's the little kid that wasn't wanted.
Right, yeah.
But, but, but that's awesome. That's really awesome that you have the endorsements. I will tell you this, the Isaien Fair Church family is going to be behind you 100%. And I'm going to make sure that. We're going to, we're going to start running your commercial here during our announcement. And we're also going to do it on our shows. Because, Wayna, honestly, it's hard, I know, for you to sit here and to receive all of the love and support that I'm trying to give you. But the truth of the matter is, you've done a lot for a lot of people. And, and I think that Wilmington is going to show up for you this time. They're going to show up for you, and they're going to show that we're tired of the same old promises, the same old this, that, and the other that never delivers. You have a product you want to deliver on. The two things that are affecting our community the most, whether it be starting with constituent services, because that is an issue for all levels, as well as mental health. Both of them are needed greatly in our community. It needs to be encouraged, it needs to be uplifted. And I think that you're going to do a phenomenal job. I'm excited, I'm excited. I can't wait. Can you think, because I'm going to retire. So my question is, you think I? Oh, almost definitely. I'm not going to be an old man sitting around.
No, you kept saying, you say that.
Okay, we're going to see, okay. But, but, but I might need a part-time job in city council.
I can't promise anything. I cannot promise anything.
But trust me, when I retire, I'm going to write a book, and I'm going to be far away, so there are going to be no problems at all. But, Wayna, but I, I wanted to give you an opportunity before we run out of time. I can come back and ask other questions. But I want to give you an opportunity. I made a comment that you don't look like what you've been through. I made a comment that you have served humanity, you have served this community for a long time. You raised strong children.
Thank you.
Now grandchildren.
Yes.
All right. I have not heard anything that would say, mm-mm, not Wayna, because you are a servant from the heart. What would you like to share with the community that will get them to see what I know?
Okay. So I was thinking, Pastor, as you was talking, and I went back to my childhood again. And I was a Brownie and a Girl Scout.
Okay.
And I remember making a pledge that I would serve God and our country and the people, the community. And that's kind of been instilled in me. So I decided, once again, to run, based on the servicehood that I have been giving the community. I've done the cleanup for about, for the youth cleanup. I've done that for, I want to say about 17 years. Served seniors all of my life, starting at a very young age. And as I shared before, that I believe that in considering running, I had to pray about it. Because you shared, you know, it's not a fun job. Some, a lot of people think that it's, you know, glitz and glamour, and that's not what it is. It's about rolling up your sleeves and getting out in the community, something that I'm already doing. And so thus, I decided to run for city council at large, just based on constituents encouraging me, your encouragement, and others. So that's why I decided to run.
Well, I think that's an excellent reason and reasoning for running. And for those of you who are watching us, I want you to make sure that we get her elected. At this point, I mean, and I'm very impressed with some of you who send us notes and call us when we have various guests on the show and share your opinions. This is a time when we're asking you, we want action. Now, Wayna, help us again, your phone number, your website, so that we can get those donations start coming in. And before you even give us that, and I'm pledging today to make sure I'm going to be one of your contributors right away. Because I don't endorse without making sure my money is where my mouth is. Because that's just, endorsement is just words. You need money to run this. You need money to get out there. And I want to keep saying that, I'm saying it to her, but I'm saying it to those of you. If you really want a candidate to win, you're going to have to help with the finances. She cannot just finance the whole operation by herself. She needs your help volunteering. She needs your help financially. Share, where do we meet? How do we knock on doors? And if you even want me to go knock on doors, which you probably don't want me to knock on doors. But if you do, I'm open to that. I want to make sure we've done everything we can to ensure the success of your candidacy. So tell us again, how do we, how do we give to you or donate?
Okay, so you can call me directly at 302-521-7325, or you can visit my website at WaynaForWilmington.com.
Yeah. Now, did Tom Gordon talk to you about this?
In reference to running?
Yeah.
He has given me some nuggets on things that I should do. Yes, yes. He's, when I tell you he's a friend, he's been a friend. Yes.
He's been a friend to our community forever.
Yes.
And I came in learning that Tom is a good person.
Yes, he is.
So I'm looking forward to seeing the work that you're going to do. So we have an opportunity to give now, and I hope some of you have written that down, and our team is putting it on the, on the screen. But what we're doing now is we're winding down. I don't want this moment to end. I'm trying to figure out, do I go into an extended time? Or you're going to come back if Trippi lets you? Okay. Because, because the Congo Hour is the popular show on the Channel 28. So they may not let you come out too much, because I might have to steal you. But we're going to let it go. You going to say something?
No, I wasn't. No, I wasn't.
Are you just laughing at me, making fun? But I will say to all of you who are watching us, the Wayna you see sitting here today is the Wayna that we all know, and that is a person who want to go out and just speak on behalf of those who are less fortunate, as well as those who are fortunate. But they need somebody to be able to be a representative. She talked about earlier that her grandparents taught her, you know, it doesn't matter who you are. You're, you're a human, and because you're a human, you need to be represented. So I think this is going to be a great opportunity. I was delighted, I'm just delighted to invite you and for you to accept to come and, and, and talk to us. And yes, now, this is August, we're going to wait until like the end of August. We're going to bring you right back, so we can remind people, and you can give an update. We want an update. Have people been donating? So that we can get the fire and start knocking on doors, saying, look, I need, I need a dollar. Give me $2, you know? Or do like the brother, young man, I was, yesterday I was driving off of 95, and he was selling water. He said a dollar for water. And I said to him, I said, I don't want the water, but here's $5, because you're out here, you, you, you're putting your hustle on, you're putting your grind in, and I appreciate that. And he said, oh, thank you, thank you, thank you. And that's what, if we got to do that, we're going to have to do it.
I've done the same thing, Pastor. Like, I don't need the water, because I got the water right here, but I've given $5 as well. So that's important. A lot of times when you ask for donations, people think that they have to give the max, which is 600. I, it doesn't matter if it's a dollar, $5, $25, it doesn't matter. Every dollar helps.
Yes. Now, have you ordered your signs and everything yet?
So I do have a few signs. I ran out, I need to put in another order.
Okay.
Yes.
So that's why we got to hurry and get that donation in. I got to write my check, so that we can get that other order taken care of. On election night, have you decided where you're going to be when you get your victory?
I haven't, and everybody is asking me, like, where's the victory party? I'm not sure.
Okay, well, well, you know, your church is always available to you, if need be. But I want to make sure that anything that we can do, we want to just support it, because I guess.
So we're going to make that happen, it's going to be here.
All right, see that, see that? Things happen at EFBC. But we will make sure that whatever we can do, and, and we consider it done, but whatever we can do, we, we're going to make it happen. I am a true believer in, in the Wayna Touch. That's the, that's the new tagline. I hope that the, the team in the back will just write there, the Wayna Touch, two N's, because Pastor spelled it one.
I know you do. And I've never corrected you.
I wish you would have, because I, because I just realized when you spelled it, I said, oh Lord, I've been spelling it wrong. But Wayna, again, thank you so very much. You do a great job for our community. This is the first time we had an opportunity to steal you from the Congo Hour, to come on and be with us today. But I asked you to come, you said yes, and I'm very appreciative to that. And we're going to get you elected. I'm going to do everything in my power. I, I know you're out there doing what you have to do in order to be elected to your daughter, to your son and grandchildren. Give them my love, and we look forward to seeing you soon. That's really that way. Listen, do you have anything else before I, I call it quits today?
No, just thank you so very much. I, I truly appreciate you, because you didn't have to have me on.
Yeah, oh, I did have to have you on.
You know what I mean.
Yeah, okay. I, I, I had to have you on because, because you've, you've been a great asset to this community.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
For real. All right, well, I'll listen, until the next time we get together, I'll be back.
I'm Alexander Hackett, and I'm running for City Council at large for the city of Wilmington. And as always, if you want to go fast, go alone, but if you want to go far, go together. Wilmington, I see you at the primary, September 10th, 2024. Vote Alexander Hackett, all right?
As a mom, I want my kids' lives to be filled with joy and possibility. And I want that for every kid. That's why I support No Kid Hungry. They work in schools and communities to make sure every kid gets the healthy meals they need. Please join me in supporting No Kid Hungry for all kids.
Thank you.
Not today.
I'm here, you can tell me anything.
I see you.
We're in this together. Breakthroughs are happening.
Treatments are evolving.
The stats can change.
Society can change.
We can all say, not today.
Not today.
Not today.
Not today.
Not today.
The American Cancer Society's Hope Lodge communities offer a free home away from home, closer to cancer care. People are meant to be together. Donate to help keep it that way.
The drive to move forward. For some people, it's a part of who they are. And it's who we are too. For 130 years, Stair University has been at the forefront of change, with programs that help students get and stay ahead. So you can keep striving.
Jason, let's go see your room.
And we're back. What a great show today, and this is not going to be the last show that I do with Wayna. I think that is just remarkable. She have certainly been reared here in Delaware and Wilmington. They call it Newcastle, but it's Wilmington, far as I'm concerned, with Dunleavy. She's done a very good job with trying to really serve this community. As a pastor, that makes me feel great to know that there are people who don't always want to be in the limelight. Watch the people who are behind the scenes that's making things happen. I mean, from real estate selling, from, from, from giving of herself and her family, sacrificing. She's been that person. Now she's coming and asking for your help. She's asking for your support. If you cannot vote for her because you don't live in Wilmington, you can donate. Donating is very important. At the bottom of the screen now, you have where you can donate to her, because it's important that we show, we show that the people who reflect what she reflects is who we need in, uh, in, in downtown and City Hall. We have to elect Wayna for City Council. That's, that's just the end of the day, and I hope that you will get on fire and, and, and donate as well as volunteer. If she wants somebody to walk with her, please, let's do this. Let's just get excited about her candidacy. Today I was joking with her, she came with her power outfit on, you know, let everybody know, I'm here, I'm ready to move, I'm ready to make some stuff happen. And I am a thorough believer. I've known Wayna for the late 19 years I've been a part of the Easy Iron Fair Church family, and she's always delivered. That's why I call it the Wayna Touch. Until the next time we get together, may the Lord, God bless you real good.
Thank you for watching this episode of Coffee with Curry. Tune in next week, Sunday at 11 a.m.